Good morning. Welcome to the informational hearing on the proposed permit reissuance for Daybreak Foods Creekwood Cage Free, located at Crossman Road and Highway A, southwest of Lake Mills in Jefferson County. My name is Duncan Moss and I'm an attorney with the Department of Natural Resources, and I've been assigned to conduct today's virtual hearing this Monday, September 21st, 2020. To assist with the hearing, I've also got online some DNR staff. Mark Kane, Regional CAFO Specialist and the Permit Drafter. Tyler Dix, our CAFO Program Coordinator. Kaitlin McLovinney, Regional CAFO Specialist. And then Tracy Fretwell and Chris Tall, they're both from our Informational Services support to make sure the virtual hearing runs smoothly. The purpose of this hearing is for the department to receive comments on the permit the department proposes to reissue for Daybreak Foods Creekwood Cage Free Farm. The proposed permit would be reissued under the Wisconsin Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, or WPDS. The facility is currently permitted under the name Daybreak Foods, Inc., Creekwood Farm. The hearing is scheduled to start at 10:00 a.m. and will run until everybody who wishes to make a comment has done so. So I'm just going to outline some of the next steps before we get started. So once the hearing is adjourned, DNR will review all the comments provided here today, as well as those we receive in writing, before making a final determination on the permit. The department will provide a summary of its responses to public comments as part of its final determination. Due to the current public health situation that we're all aware of, the department's holding this public hearing using an online conference platform. As a courtesy to everybody who's come to offer comments, we're going to limit oral comments of the hearing today to five minutes per person. That means when it's your turn to speak, I'll let you know when your time is up. I'll inform you if your time is up, so once I say that, please endeavor to wrap up. I will then mute your microphone and move on to the next person. If you do have more lengthy comments, we invite you, please, to submit them in writing. We will be accepting written comments until September 28th, 2020, and we will have a screen come up and we'll identify the address at which you can send them to. That's also available on the website. If time permits, after we've heard from everybody today who wishes to comment, we may be able to give a second opportunity to those who've already spoken. So please, if I have to cut you off, please let me know if you want to respeak and you can come in at the end, once everybody else has had a chance to speak. You can have some further time. Finally, we will not be responding to questions during the public hearing. The purposes of today's hearing is to hear from you. If you have questions, you may state them as a comment, but we will not be responding to the questions during the hearing. We will be responding in writing to questions and comments we receive as part of the final permit determination. So before we start the public comments section of the hearing, we will hear from Mark Kane, who's going to give you an overview of the proposed permit. After which, you'll be invited to provide your comments. If you have any questions about this presentation, please make them in your comments during the public comment period, so that we can answer them in writing. Now I'd notice we have two people with their hands up right now, so while Mark is giving his presentation, anybody else who wishes to speak, please raise your hand. So Mark, I'm going to hand over to you. I'll mute my mic and you can unmute yours.
Okay Duncan, can you hear me?
We've got you.
Awesome, okay. Welcome, everybody, to the hearing. What I'd like to do is give you just a very short presentation that covers a tiny bit of history of the facility and explains what we're planning to do, what we're proposing to do as part of this permit reissuance. And then I'll include in that what's an overview of what's included in the proposed permit. First of all, I guess my name is Mark Kane. I'm a wastewater engineer, working in the South Central Region with an office in Fitchburg. I cover many counties, but one of them is Jefferson County. And so my role in this project is as the Permit Drafter and then after the permit is reissued as the regulator. So for general information, what has happened at this facility is they've undergone a major upgrade from a layer operation to a cage-free operation. That included putting in eight new barns. They put in three, their existing site was, as many of you probably know, is on the west side of Crossman Road, over southwest of Lake Mills. And they had a full operation there of layers and pullets. And what they did is, on the west side of Crossman Road, they removed the nine pullet, the nine-layer barns that they had and installed three pullet barns. On the new site, which is on the east side of Crossman Road, they installed a layer operation there that included five new cage-free layer buildings. And they also made other changes to the operation, which included a new drying system for the, both the layer and pullet manures, and a storage building, which is on the east side of Crossman Road. They also put in a new feed mill, new production buildings, new offices, new basically, everything was replaced at that facility other than the existing wastewater storage, wastewater treatment and storage for the egg wash water. And also, they left two of their, what were previously called compost barns, but are now being used as solid waste, solid manure storage buildings in emergency situations. So basically, they've kind of redone the entire facility, a project that took several years to get done. Part of this facility, then, this change was determined to be a new source CAFO, meaning that it, CAFO stands for concentrated animal feeding operation. And what that definition means is that they have some different performance requirements for the manure and wastewater. And so, one of the things that happens when you're a new source CAFO is that you're not allowed to discharge pollutants from the production area to navigable waters under any circumstances. So that's a change that's added to their new, to the reissued permit that we're proposing. The facility now has 25,527 animal units, including, that includes both layers and pullets. And they do not have any plans to further expand the farm at this time. So the receiving waters for this facility are tributaries to the Lower Koshknon Creek and Lower Crawfish River. The permit that they had and have would have ended at the end of 2017. They did have a, submit a timely application, and so they're allowed to continue to operate under that current, what would be called the current permit right now. And as they made the changes, we work with them through that process. So this will be, is proposed to be the fifth reissuance or the sixth permit for them. And the permit itself has traditional requirements in it for monitoring, for reporting, for storage, for nutrient management, and for operational items. And the proposed permit is again for a five-year, another five-year term. So as I said before, this is, permit is a new source CAFO by definition, and that means that it's an integrated analysis, and it does not require a separate analysis. So the analysis that we did for this is included in the permit fact sheet, and I'll touch on that in a minute. So attached here, shown here, is a map of the farm. I won't go into this in great detail, but kind of at the bottom of the map in the center is where it shows the Crossman Road, right in the middle, coming kind of north and south. On the east side of that is the all-new production facilities. That would be the layer operation with the cage-free layer operation with the five barns. And then just directly to the right or east of that is the new manure the manure storage building, manure and processed, dried manure storage building. Just above that is the production buildings for the eggs processing. Across the street, then, onto the west side of Crossman Road is where the feed mill is. And just north of that is the, the two barns that are shown there. Those are the old compost, manure, dry manure storage buildings, which are still approved for storage. The intent of the farm is to only use that in an emergency, but they are approved to be used for continuing, for continuing use if needed. To the, further to the, to the west, then, would be where the three pullet barns are. And just north of that, along Highway A, is where the wastewater treatment facility is for egg wash water, and that includes two digesters and a storage lagoon. And then above that, and a little bit to the right north, and is the old is the old egg processing building and offices building, which still, those two buildings still exist, or that one building still exists. So I want to break this up into a couple of the segments that are in the permit, just to kind of explain what the facility has now and just kind of give you a little bit of knowledge of what, how the nutrient management part of this is handled. So this farm, as it's now, is now populated and running, was going to produce about 50,000 tons of solid manure every year that is dried. We have approved a nutrient management plan for this facility that includes something called an alternative distribution plan. And that's an allowance in our code, NR243, that we are able to look, work with farms on alternative distribution. They have submitted that, I'll go over that in a minute, and we've approved that. So the manure is dried and stored at the farm and picked up by a third-party operator that will then be responsible for that manure. And that third party has a contract with Daybreak Foods. And so that's how that's, you know, controlled. The, most of the dried manure is transported out of state or used for other commercial purposes. But the alternative distribution approval that we have given them does allow some land application in Wisconsin. It's not planned to be very much, but it is allowed, and it is done under that approval. If we run into problems or issues with the way that the alternative distribution contract and operation is done, we do have the ability to rescind that approval. So on that, so that's the dried solid manure, that's how that's handled. The other component of this farm is liquid egg wash water. They produce 20, 22,000 gallons of egg wash water every day, and that is sent over to the treatment plant that is on the west side of Crossman Road, as same as it was before. So it goes through a treatment process and then is stored, and then is eventually land-applied. The NMP, the Nutrient Management Plan that we've approved, does have 477.3 spreadable acres in it, so that's where that egg wash water would go. In a minute, I'll show you a map of where those acres are. That, that egg wash water is treated the same in terms of the permit as manure, liquid manure would be for other operations, dairy operations and such. It has setbacks in it from surface water quality management areas, which are areas that are adjacent to streams and ponds and lakes and wetlands. So there are some setbacks for, and I'm not going to go into details on that, but there are setbacks for those areas for land application. There's also setbacks from wells and direct conduits to groundwater and many other items dealing with slopes and other things. Too numerous to mention on here, but are part of the permit. There is one difference, and that is that they are allowed to do some winter spreading, again, with specific restrictions that are all included in the permit. So the next is a map of the spreading fields that are essentially east of Lake Mills. These are the same spreading fields, many of the same spreading fields they've used for many, many years. The permit itself, again, has a rather limited requirement in the schedule section because everything is built, everything is operating. There isn't any more needed, there wasn't anything else needed. They went through plan approvals, followed all, you know, followed all those approvals that we gave them for all of the construction and the demolition of parts of the farm. So what we have left in this permit, then, is fairly standard permit schedule items. So I'm going to go over those real quickly. The first one is a monitoring inspection plan, and that is something they submit to the department that talks about how they're going to monitor their farm, record those results, and then later submit those to us. So that's a comprehensive plan that they'll be updating with the new facility for all of the different monitoring things that they have to do. So those are inspections for certain things that are, some are daily, some are weekly, some are quarterly, and I'm not going to go into those details, but just be aware that there is a significant monitoring inspection requirement for this farm. The other thing that they then need to submit is a, is an updated emergency response plan. So they'll be, they'll do that shortly after the permit is issued. The monitoring inspection program is also required shortly after the permit is reissued, 30 days on both of those. This permit, as all other permits do, includes an updated, update requirement for nutrient management planning. So each year, they will update their plan and submit it to us early in the year, in end of March. And then an annual report each year is due for permit compliance and future changes that are anticipated. So they'll go, send us that annual report, just like all of our other CAFO farms do, and that's due at the end of January. So that's the end of what I wanted to cover. I just want to remind people that there is a lot of information about this facility out on our webpage. It's also available by contacting me or other folks in the program. We can send you whatever you need, but it is up on our webpage, which, that address is up there right now. You can also get it by Googling Wisconsin DNR Daybreak Foods. It'll come up, it's a specific webpage, has all the documents that we have for this facility. And it also includes the permit fact sheet, which I mentioned earlier, and that's where all of the environmental review information is. It also includes the EAQ, the Environmental Analysis Question, information that we received from the farm, and then our, as I said, in our fact sheet, the compilation of all that materials and all of that information. And then all other related documents are included on that, on that webpage. And again, as always, are available by contacting me directly if you need to. So the last slide I have up here, then, is just a reminder for where to send comments. You can also send comments in addition to what you say today, as Duncan mentioned earlier. There's my email address, my phone number. I am working from home, just like most people, so that number is my cellphone. If you use that, if you have one of my cards or other things from the past, I had an office phone number, but I'm not really using that right now. I'm specifically using this cellphone number and email, and my email address is on this slide, and we'll probably be leaving this slide up for most of the rest of the hearing. And then a reminder that all comments are due by the end of the day, on September 28th, which is next Monday, by the end, the close of business at the end of the day. So with that, I'll end my presentation and turn it back to Duncan.
Mark, for the, for the people who are on the phone and cannot see your slide, could you read out the full information for them?
Absolutely. So it's Mark Kane, last name is spelled C-A-I-N. Into DNR, the address is DNR/SouthCentralRegion, and the specific street address is 3911 Fish Hatchery Road. And that's in Fitchburg, F-I-T-C-H-B-U-R-G, Wisconsin, 53711. My cellphone number is area code 608-516-5434. And my email address is mark, M-A-R-K dot Kane, C-A-I-N, at Wisconsin, the whole letter spelled out, the whole word spelled out, dot gov.
Great, thank you, Mark. Okay, so now it's time to hear, to hear from you, from the public. I just want to remind you, I will call on you, the people who've raised their hands. So if you're on the Zoom app, click on the Participants button at the bottom of the screen, and then the Participants window will allow, will, there'll be a button on there to raise your hand. If you're on the phone, you can type star nine, please do that at any time. Right now, I just see two people with hands raised. So as I mentioned before, the purpose of today's hearing is to listen to your comments on the proposed permit for Daybreak Foods. I'll be calling you one at a time, and we'll call out the names and let you know who is next in line. When I hear your name called to speak, please unmute, I will unmute your mic and tell you to start. And we'll be giving everybody about five minutes. And then once everybody's had a chance to speak, we will give extra time if needed. It is important that you state your name and address on the record. That is, for the purposes of appearance, which is required by state law. Otherwise, your comments may not be available to be addressed by the department. I will remind you that we are recording the hearing right now. So first person I'm going to call on is Anita Martin. I'm going to unmute you now, Anita, and if you could state your name and address for the record. Are you, I'm trying to unmute you right now. Anita, I'm having problems. Okay, you should be unmuted now.
I'm sorry.
No problem, please proceed.
All right. My name is Anita J. Martin. We live at 261 Pinnacle Drive in the community of Lake Mills, the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Thank you for holding this hearing, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak as well as to submit written comments. It's simply not possible to comment on all or even most of the potential risks to air, water, fish, and other wildlife this operation may pose. My testimony today is based on available and accessible information. Most of my questions and requests to the DNR for information in preparation for today's public hearing have been responded to in a timely fashion, and thank you for that. Some questions pertaining to this facility, its operations, and the permit determination itself, however, have not been answered. One question in particular has not been answered after three email requests. To speculate why this information has not been provided would not be prudent. It also would not be productive, and it would not be a respectful use of my time, energy, and resources. As part of this permit review process, Mr. David Panofsky, who is an engineer and in the air manager, he's an engineer in the Air Management Division of Bureau of Air Management at DNR. He notes a number of factors, which I won't have time to get into, but I think it's important and appreciated that he weighed in on air emission issues pertaining to the operation. The facility, it's important to note, the facility submitted 2019 air emission data as legally required by their construction air pollution permit. They provided it to the DNR by the March 2020 deadline. They resubmitted corrected data, which was made publicly available September 16th, 2020. It appears the corrected report may still be incomplete and not wholly accurate. Written comments pertaining to this data will be submitted for DNR's consideration as part of my public comments in writing. The Wisconsin DNR is required by law to regulate the amount of wastewater pollution industrial facilities, non-agricultural as well as agriculture allowed to release. The question is, has the DNR demonstrated substantial compliance to the nutrient management plan and the wastewater permit? It does not appear, three main areas I'll quickly focus in on would be key document. It does not appear to have been reviewed by the DNR.
Ms. Martin, let me just interrupt. You might want to just step back. I think you, we lost your, we lost your, your audio feed.
Oh, oh, how long ago?
Not long, just about a sentence back.
All right, sorry.
I'll give you a bit more time, so that's.
Okay. The date of the last compliance inspection by the DNR was in October of 2016. As part of this permit review process, Mr. James F. Jim Amorine, DNR Water Resources Management Specialist, reviewed potential impacts of this operation. Amongst his comments were included that it is imperative, and he underlined those words, that the nutrient management plan be strictly enforced. The law requires CAFOs to submit soil samples every four years for fields which will receive their waste. It looks like 39 fields are in this facility and empty, and 13 or 33% of the tests are more than four years old. The document Daybreak Foods Corporation submitted to the DNR, under the Soil Test Lab column and the Lab Number column, appear the words in capital letters, bogus. There, so in checking as to what this means, I was told that they set the test level at 101 parts per million for phosphorus. Because they do not have a current soil sample yet, this creates the most restrictive requirements, and they are not allowed to land a place, land apply waste on these fields until they get an actual soil test result. The problem with this is, there's no way of telling how high the phosphorus levels are actually in these soils. And high phosphorus levels in soils are responsible for, can be responsible for runoff nitrate issues and water pollution problems. Numerous tests from soil samples taken at a different egg-laying operation, not owned by Daybreak Corporation, have come back between 300 and 766 parts per million phosphorus. Reliable sources say that once fields are at such a high level, it takes decades, many decades in some instances, depending on the level, before the levels get down to a desirable level. Before finalizing and approving this permit, please ensure the following changes have taken place. The facility has submitted up-to-date soil samples, and the appropriate DNR staff has reviewed the results. Number two, the DNR has reviewed the waste-spreading logs to determine whether waste is being applied as permitted by law. Number three, the DNR has made formal determination regarding the 2020 nutrient management plan update, either rejected it or approved it. Number four, the appropriate DNR staff has conducted and documented a compliance inspection. It bears repeating Mr. Amorine's analysis, in which he states it is imperative, and he underlines those three words, the nutrient management plan is strictly enforced. And that analysis is part of the permit fact sheet. In conclusion, I call upon the owners and managers of Daybreak Foods Creekwood Farm Cage Free to ensure the nutrient management plan and the wastewater permit provisions are followed. And I call upon the Wisconsin DNR to strictly enforce the nutrient management plan and the provisions in the wastewater pollution permit. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Martin. As you can probably tell those listening, I've let her continue on way beyond, beyond the five minutes, and simply because we only have two people with their hands up. So I will do the same for the next caller. All right, so this one is somebody calling in by phone. The phone number is 715-314-1915. I'm going to put you on, unmute you. So right now, I'm asking you to unmute. I'm not sure on the phone what sort of response you're getting. Okay, you're open mic now. If you could identify yourself with your name and address, and then proceed with your comments.
Well, good morning, everybody. My name is Dr. Steve Oberly.
Well, good morning, everybody. My name is Dr. Steve Oberly. I'm calling in from Gilman, Wisconsin. My address is N4227 County Road H, as in Hotel, Gilman, 54433. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you loud and clear, and thank you for providing your name and address. Please go ahead.
Oh, great, great. So I want to give you a little context. I've been what you could call agro-environmental consultant now for about 10 years, mostly working here in Wisconsin with groups around the state, tribes, municipalities, units of government that have had issues with these larger farms, including the CAFOs. And probably most relevant to these proceedings, while this was back a few years ago, I retired from public service, and I was a county conservationist in Taylor County for about 15 years. And in that capacity, we certainly reviewed a lot of nutrient management plans. We permitted these types of operations. We enforced regulations with regards to these type of operations. So I'm really well familiar with the issues. I will be providing some more detailed written comments, and I appreciate the opportunity for that as well. And for these purposes, this hearing, I do not have any prepared comments, but I just wanted to pick up on a few things that Anita mentioned. You know, and I think it was Mark that gave us the background on the nutrient management plan. I appreciate that because one of the things I've found over the years, especially with these larger farms, is I think we've taken our eye off the ball with regards to the phosphorus issue. And I'm sure you're all familiar with what I mean by the phosphorus issue. We used to call it non-point source pollution. So the last several years, I've become more and more aware that the phosphorus issue on these larger farms is really quite serious, to the point of having phosphorus levels as Anita mentioned. I've seen now the highest 600 or 700 parts per million phosphorus. And meanwhile, as a soil scientist, I can tell you, the average, probably optimum level for phosphorus on our soils and crops is about 30, 25 to 30. So it takes a lot of years for those fields to come down, even if they're not applying any phosphorus. And they continue to be a threat, both the surface water quality course with any runoff. And I think it's safe to say, my background is mostly in nitrogen. Those fields that we're seeing very, very high in phosphorus are also likely the same fields that are leaching the most amount of nitrate to groundwater. I want to direct your attention to just two things about the permit and the nutrient management plan. And again, I'll get this in writing to you by the end of the week, probably. I guess one question, big question for you folks is, when you look at a proposal like this, and you know the animal units and the spreadable acres, is there a number or a range of values you look to in terms of the, what I would call the animal density or the loading rates on these fields? This would be acres per animal unit. Anytime I see acres per animal unit less than one, and a lot of these, this one is coming in probably lowest that I've ever seen, less than 0.1 acres per animal unit, that's usually a sign that this is not sustainable. And what ends up happening is the fields closest to the facility end up loading in phosphorus so quickly they have to go elsewhere because you guys have the cutoff of 200 parts per million. So I wanted to draw that to your attention, if you ever looked at that. I think from my experience now, working with these more sustainable operations, what would be probably more acceptable, and it depends, of course, on the operation, is probably somewhere in the neighborhood of three to four acres per animal unit to be sustainable. And my big example or reference for that would be these century farms here in Wisconsin. They've been around for over 100 years, you know, so you might want to look to them for some guidance here. The other thing that I would like to bring up, because this is sort of a unique case. I noticed in the nutrient management plan that these fields will be receiving manure from two operations now. The dairy that they're going to be renting ground from, and then their own waste from the egg washing. And I'm wondering if you guys have bothered to look at both nutrient management plans to make sure that everything is accurate and such. So that's all I have. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I do not have anybody else with their hand up. This is an opportunity now, if you have a comment, to raise your hand, and we can call on you. Okay, Ann Taylor, you just raised your hand. I'm going to unmute you now. Okay, you've been unmuted. If you want to, if you could state your name and address, and you can make your comments.
Sure. Thank you very much. Thank you for holding this hearing today. My name is Ann Taylor, and I live at 341 Pinnacle Drive in Lake Mills. And I just wanted to echo what the last speaker said about sustainability. That's my concern about this, what people are calling a farm, but to me seems to be really a factory. And we are reviewing procedures and criteria that have been set up basically to allow factories into our rural areas and small communities. And that is of great concern to me because I don't believe that these are sustainable farming methods. And I understand that, I looked at all the documents online over the weekend and could see all these protocols that are being followed, and that everybody is doing what is required by the law. But the bottom line is that the law right now in Wisconsin is allowing these factories to come in. And the truth is, the water sheds and the tributaries around this factory are already being polluted right now. And we are just talking about what is okay for now, but like the last speaker has said, it's not sustainable into the future. And I'm new to Lake Mills, but I don't want to be living in a community where I end up having to drink bottled water like some of the other municipalities are having to do. You know, there are people talk about the homes that are in rural areas and their wells being polluted, but at some point, the small towns, their wells become polluted as well. So I really appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I know that this, what I'm talking about is not within the parameter of what you are looking at today. You're looking to see if the i's have been dotted and the t's have been crossed, and I understand that. But I think there's a bigger issue here, and that is that Wisconsin has allowed our natural resources to be exploited in this way. It's not sustainable, and I'm hoping that things can change in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, at this time, we have nobody else with their hands raised. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand. If you're on a phone, you can do *9. Okay, Anita Martin, you've raised your hand again.
Is it okay for me to speak, or would there be anyone else that wants to first?
So far, nobody else has raised a hand, so please, if you want to continue.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make one point that I forgot to earlier, is that it appears that the current number of birds, at least at the time that the permit documents were prepared, would be 2,699,000. It appears that the permit would cover a bird population of 2,800,000, from what I can tell. The numbers have kind of varied a little bit over the years when information was presented, and I understand that, but I just do want to make a point that we really are talking about, I believe, a permit that is at an allowable level of 2,800,000 birds. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. And just for the record, just to confirm, those comments were from Anita Martin, who has previously made an appearance. Okay, right now, we have nobody else with their hands up. This is an opportunity right now. If you wish to speak, please go ahead. If you're on the phone, *9. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody, any other hands up. What we'll do is we will, I'll make some closing remarks right now. We'll leave the hearing open for people to enter and raise their hands until 11 o'clock. But after that time, we will then close the hearing, and we'll leave the screen available for people with the address to submit written comments. So I'd like to remind everybody that in lieu of, or in addition to any oral statement today, we will be accepting written comments by September 28th, which is next Monday, at the address on the screen right now, which for those who are on the phone is address them to Mark Kane with the Department of Natural Resources, 3911 Fish Hatchery Road, Fitchburg, Wisconsin, 53711. You can also contact Mark by his phone number, 608-516-5434, or his email, mark.mrk, C-A-I-N, at wisconsin.gov. That information's also available on the website where you registered for this hearing. Written statements will have the same weight and effect as any oral statements made at today's hearing. So this time, I don't see anybody else with a hand raised. We will leave the hearing open for people to come in and raise their hands until 11 o'clock. Thereafter, we will close the hearing, and the record will remain open until the end of September 28th, at which time we will have accepted any written comments. So I'd like to thank everybody right now for attending. If you do not intend to speak, you don't necessarily need to stay in the hearing. The DNR staff will remain available on the hearing to allow people to comment until 11 o'clock. I'm now going to pause the recording. Okay, this is Duncan Moss. I'm the hearing officer for the Daybreak Foods WPDS permit. We are planning to close the meeting at 11 o'clock. If nobody else raises a hand. I think we've had one additional person join the hearing since we commenced it. I'd like to give everybody last chance opportunity to raise a hand if they wish to speak. You do so if you're on the app. You click on the Participants ribbon at the bottom, and you'll see a Participants window open, and that will allow you to raise your hand. If you're on the phone, you can type *9. So now is the last opportunity for anybody to raise their hands before we close the hearing. I'll reiterate that you still can submit written comments by the end of September 28th, and those should be sent to Mark Kane, Department of Natural Resources, 3911 Fish Hatchery Road, Fitchburg, Wisconsin, 53711. You can also contact Mark at his cellphone number, 608-516-5434, or his email, which is mark.mrk, C-A-I-N, at wisconsin.gov.